Centerville City Council is now in session. We thank you for your patience as we get, we were a little late on our work session discussing utopia issues. And I had to wait for a minute to get set up because we now stream our city council meetings live on the YouTube, so each of you who wants to participate in any public hearing can be an internet star to the vast crowds of those who are watching online. We're going to, we'll note for the record that all members of the city council are here and accounted for. Our city manager is away at a city manager's conference this week, but Blaine is capably covering for him. We'll start tonight with the pledge of allegiance, which I'll ask you to stand and join me for, after which Blaine Lutz will provide a prayer or a thought.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our only father, we're thankful for this opportunity to be able to meet as a community to be able to discuss the issues of this great community and be able to give it direction and guidance. We're thankful for the great country we live in and for this great community and for the resources that we do have. We ask you to bless that your spirit be with us to be able to help and guide the correct decisions and bless those that provide the services that are essential to living in Centerville and to be able to live in this country and those that protect it and those that serve it. We ask their blessing to be with us in the S name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Blaine. And Blaine, when, if you could get the agenda up on the screens, I think that would be, that would be helpful. We'll start tonight with an open session. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to comment on any manner of, matter of municipal concern, including agenda items that are not scheduled for a public hearing. If you're here to speak regarding the public hearing on the 77 West Lund Lane rezone, I suggest that you wait until that portion of the meeting. It'll only be a few minutes. It's number four on the agenda and we'll have the public hearing then. If you'd like, if anyone would like to speak on any other matter, I'll go ahead and open the public session and invite you to come and, to the microphone, state your name, the city of residence for the record, and address the council on whatever issue you'd like to. So the public's session is now open.
Many residents are noticing that the disposal waste management people are picking up black and blue barrels in the same truck and, or they're gonna, they pick up the black barrels and run around in the same truck and pick up the blue barrels. I don't know why they're doing that. But the issue is that we're not getting recycling done. China is not accepting recycling because of the way their markets are changing. There's a misconception out there that it's just as easy to buy rather than buy recycled, which isn't completely true. And so what we, what my question is, is when are we gonna tell, or when are you gonna tell the residents or notify them that there really is no need for their blue can that they're paying extra for unless they wanna use it anyway, but it's all going to the same place? Large barges of recycling have been rejected by China, sent back to the US, and then, you know, they have to go dump it in the landfill. The only other solution to this, I'm not sure how long-term that is, is for someone in Utah to come up with a recycling business so that we can facilitate all our recycling.
Anyone else would like to be heard during the open session? If not, I'll go ahead and close the open session and, since Mr. Gabriel's question was about recycling, we'll note on the agenda later, we're here to talk about the garbage pickup. This is the first I have heard of any suggestion that the same truck was picking up black and blue cans. If we got any evidence of that, I'd like to see it. The trucks are identical, I believe, that do that, but I wasn't aware of, this is the first report I've heard of the same truck picking up that. There's also, if you go online, if you don't want to stay, but later, under Blaine, if you want to go down, under the, on the Nova's agenda, under the information on the solid waste collection contract, there's, we've got some letters from ACE, who handles our recycling. I believe those letters discuss what has happened to all the recycling the last five years and the response from, from ACE is that none of that has ever gone directly to the landfill. It's always gone to our recycling facility, but if, I'm happy to, if there's evidence that that's not taking place, happy to listen to it.
We will also have Larry Gibbons of Rocky Mountain Recycling at that time.
Is Larry coming to speak to us?
Yes.
Okay, great. So he can, he can comment on the situation with China, which is indeed very serious. Okay, moving on, minutes, review and acceptance. We have a couple of sets of minutes. First, the March 15th council meeting minutes. Does anyone have any changes to those March 15th council meeting minutes?
I have a slight change on page five, line 14. On 13, the sentence starts, "She mentioned that the neighboring property owners have expressed a desire for the property to remain as is." After that sentence, I'd like to add, "And so citywide use might not be what they desire."
Any objections to that? I had a change on, just a slight correction on page eight, excuse me, page seven, line 49. Mayor Cutler reported, "West Valley mayor indicated to him," I'd like to change that to "West Valley officials." I called the mayor, but it was actually the assistant city manager and the city manager who called me back. So it was a West Valley official indicated in the West Valley has no intention of approving the location discussed by Mr. Dix. And the next page, slight correction on line 15, discussing the Bountiful City Work Session Regarding Rap Tax Allocation. Instead of saying "Bountiful City has committed a portion of rap tax revenue," I'd suggest that's changed. "Bountiful officials suggested a willingness to commit a portion of the rap tax revenues." They have not actually made that commitment. Any other changes to the March 15th council meeting minutes? Or how about now the work session minutes?
I did have, this is on page four, lines 33 to 37. I remember us saying that there were some of these short-term topics for the planning commission that we wanted back to us during the second quarter of this year, and I don't see indication of which ones those are. I don't know, I don't remember who took the screenshot of the-
I took a screenshot of that and could provide that. I'm not sure that I shared that or you were still there. Katie, were you, at that point, you'd gone upstairs, right? You're going there the whole meeting? Why don't I share that? I'm happy to share the screenshot and review that with Katie if you want to hold off on those minutes.
I'd appreciate that, thanks.
I, I had one change on page two. This was Bill, "When Councilman Hans asked if Centerville has a formal relationship with a group like the Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Thacker responded that the city does not actively recruit businesses." I, I thought his response was that the chamber does not actively recruit business, but do you remember him saying the city does not recruit them? I thought, I thought the comment was about the chamber.
I think it was about the chamber. I didn't notice that. I think it was about the chamber. I did not notice that.
So if we could change that on line 42, instead of the city, but to the chamber?
I had a change on page two as well. The sentence on lines 28 and 29, we were talking about protecting for that expansion of heavy industrial use, but then also restarting more thorough. So I want that sentence to reflect those two layers of, of the decision on the West Side planning. So this would say, "Councilwoman Fillmore stated that should be in expedited action." The word "that" referring to the quick change on the heavy industrial. "In addition, she feels a cohesive solid ordinance would put the city in a stronger position," and then add to that sentence, "for this area rather than waiting for a PDO proposal from a developer." In addition, oh, I don't have any comment about that, but on line, on page four, did you get that, Katie, already?
I can send that too if you need me to.
On page four, line 43, we had been talking about the expected feedback from our residents, and I did say that I'd like to document how much feedback we get. I'm not sure how best to-
This is in regards to fluoride?
To the fluoride.
Yes. We talked about sending a letter to the county, and I said that I'd like to first document how much feedback we get from the citizens.
So how about someone in the council expressed a desire to collect feedback from residents and a desire to write to the county requesting issues?
That would do it.
And I, do you want to approve these with the correction from the pick or bring them back next time with, with those, any clarifications on the prioritization?
I would motion that we accept the city council meeting minutes and table the work session minutes until the amendments are made.
I second that.
Moved in second that we accept as amended, I assume, the-
Yes.
-March 15th council meeting minutes and table the others. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Next is an interlocal agreement with Davis County for the Barnard Creek Culvert Project. Lisa can talk about the agreement, and we also have our city engineer, Kevin Campbell, here to answer questions on the project itself.
Thank you. Yes, we're asking the council to approve an interlocal agreement between Centerville City and Davis County for a joint project and cost share project on the Barnard Creek Culvert. Essentially, it's replacing a 24-inch CMP pipe with a 36-inch corrugated metal pipe at about 1150 north, 1300 west. And as is indicated in the staff report, this has been on our list. This is going to be a good project for us to cost share with the county. The county will own the culvert and the improvements once the project is done, and the city's portion, city's contribution will be about $82,593, and the county will be contributing $97,498, which is mainly the labor and equipment. So if you have any other questions about the project, Kevin Campbell, our city engineer is here, he can also answer some questions, but essentially, staff is recommending that the council approve this agreement, subject to the RDA approving the tax increment funding for this project. This is within the Barnard Creek CDA, so we will be using RDA funds for that, which will be also explained in our RDA meeting. But we want to have you approve this agreement, subject to the RDA funding it. The other condition that I might suggest you put in there is also subject to any changes requested by Davis County that are acceptable to staff. We've sent this agreement to them, but we haven't heard back from them on any comments, but we thought we'd just keep it in the queue and bring it to you, so hopefully they won't have too many changes. And I think this project is scheduled for August.
Any questions for Lisa or for Mr. Campbell on this project? If not, I'd look for a motion to-
I do have one question. Kevin, what is the material of the existing culvert?
So CMP corrugated metal pipe.
Oh, sorry.
And so that's, if you recall, with some of the previous city council members, we brought in some samples of the corrugated metal, how it is rusting out. This is a project that's been on our master plan, was part of the master plan that was ratified. The funding has always been scheduled to be part of the CDA, so the funding portion was not on the, the master plan funding, but this project was on the master plan, and we've anticipated this for some time to, to partner with the county to get this project completed.
And then what is RCP?
Reinforced Concrete Pipe.
Any further questions for Kevin? If not, I'd look for a motion to approve Resolution 2016-8 with the two, subject to the two conditions that Lisa suggested, funding from the RDA and any minor changes acceptable to staff suggested by Davis County.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move that we approve 2016-8, subject to Lisa's two conditions.
Second.
Moved in second. Further discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
The only thing I wanted to point out on, is on the staff report, fourth line from the bottom, it says the RDA's pages lane project area, the Lund funds, and that was "should be parished."
Should be parished, yeah.
That's not in the agreement, just in the staff report, right?
Right.
So that passed unanimously, so we look forward to getting that project done before the next flood. Kevin, you can, you can stay up because next item is to award the bid for the Streets Crack Seal and Slurry projects for 2016 to Intermountain Slurry Seal. Can you provide us a, an update on that or a staff report before any action?
Yes, we received two bids. We received a bid for Morgan Pavement Maintenance. It is around $217,000. We received a bid from Intermountain Slurry Seal for about $220,000. And we decided not to, we decided to eliminate item four from the bid schedule. The unit price was rather high, and the work was not necessarily needed to be done with this project. It was raising some concrete water valve collars that had been busted up. We could have also, this is a unit price contract, so we could have also taken off item number three, which is striping of some crosswalks. That would have made Intermountain Slurry Seal's bid low, but we did not want to do that. We still may take that out of Intermountain Slurry Seal's contract and have the Public Works do that at some time, but we, for the past five years of often, we've been having problems with Morgan Pavement Maintenance. And overall, the bottom line is we're seeing some inconsistencies in the material that they're putting down. We've taken some tests on those. We're still trying to work through that with Intermountain Slurry Seal, excuse me, with Morgan Pavement Maintenance. But staff is recommending that we, we award this project to Intermountain Slurry Seal. They completed slurry seals in the city, it's been about five years ago, but they, they had the contract for about five years in a row, five years in a row. So we're confident that their material, we've taken some core samples of the streets that they slurry sealed six, seven years ago, and the slurry seal is still about a quarter of an inch thick. And we're core sampling streets that Morgan Pavement Maintenance has slurry sealed just in the past couple of years, and they're not quite as thick already. So thickness is not the only component of slurry seal, but it is a component that we're still researching and trying to figure out more about. But again, we didn't want to just take out those two bid items just to have Intermountain Slurry Seal be low. We, we have met several times with Morgan Pavement Maintenance, trying to sort through these concerns that we have. They're aware of them. They agree with some of them. And so that's kind of the, the big picture.
Why do you think we only got two bidders? Usually we get more than two, don't we, on our, on this particular contract?
For the past 10 years, it's either been Intermountain Slurry Seal or Morgan Pavement Maintenance that's gotten the job. Sometimes we'll get a third bidder, but again, for the past 10 years, it's been those two. They're the two big players in this area. So we usually anticipate working with one of those two.
I'd really like to see the crosswalk come out. I felt like that was extremely high. I'm the crosswalk specialist, you know, and I've watched them paint a lot of them, and it only takes a few minutes. I think $4,000 was, I think our city crews, I've watched them do it. I, I would much rather see our city crews take that, do that.
Yeah, I think that that price is a bit high, and again, to be honest, we probably would have taken that, that out of the contract before we recommended award, but we didn't want to make it look like to Morgan that we were just doing that to get Intermountain Slurry Seal low. So appreciate that.
So, so you've piqued my interest a lot on Morgan and the potential difference in material properties. It looks like we're specifying what the material properties are that we're looking for in the bid. Are, are you indicating that there may be a swap-out that took place or there's inferior materials that were used? Help me understand that a little bit more.
Yeah, the, what we found out from the cores and they've submitted, so before they start the project, they submit Civ Analysis of the, of the aggregate that they're going to use. All of those Civ Analysis passed the specification, but we think for future projects, what we're gonna do is, we're going to test the aggregate more regularly because the aggregate determines the thickness of what's being laid down. They, they get their aggregate from Staker Parsons. Staker Parsons certifies that the aggregate meets the spec, and so they, you know, they do have the testing, but our testing and the core samples we've taken are a little bit in conflict with maybe what Staker certified, that their, their aggregate. So it's, it's, it's kind of a difference between maybe a quarter inch aggregate and a, maybe a sixth of an inch aggregate is what we're talking. And, but to us, that's a substantial difference, especially when we're trying to get these slurry seals to last 10 years, like we're trying to do with our streets master planning. And so they've sent us the informa, they've sent us their application rates, their application rates for the tonnage of aggregate meets the standard. Our big concern is we go out on the streets and sometimes they look inconsistent from street to street, or maybe even on the same street, there are some areas that look maybe smooth and not as coarse, and other areas that look coarser. So the coverage is there, the application rate is there. We are questioning their aggregate, whether or not it's, they're supposed to have between 10 and 30% of the aggregate is supposed to be between a quarter of an inch and 3/8 of an inch. That's the larger aggregate size that we're questioning. Again, the, the tonnage of aggregate is there, but we, we're trying to work through this with Morgan to see. Their explanation is that the Staker pit that they use, the aggregate is, on average, it meets the spec, but it's on the lower end. Maybe it has 10% in that range.
So they're just indicating you got lucky with your core samples and, and got the low end of the average every time, or what's, what's their explanation?
Their explanation is that their mixed design meets the spec, that their gradations that they've taken meet the spec, and we're trying to get from them to explain to us, okay, why then to our dozen core samples? Why is it on the thin side? They're questioning how we're measuring those, but we've put it back on them. We've, we've told them, "You guys need to come back to us and tell us why some of these streets look inconsistent." And so it is. It's, it's a kind of an ongoing, it's difficult to be, we, we told them, "We, we need Morgan pavement. We only have two players in the market. We can't be beholden to Intermountain Slurry Seal and exclude Morgan indefinitely because then, you know, if we're only getting one bid, just imagine what, what would happen with that." So we, we need them, we need to work with them, we need to help them try to figure out what's going on with their, we think it's something to do with their aggregate from Staker Parsons.
Thank you. Yeah, that satisfies my curiosity as to the recommendation, so. Lisa or Kevin, does, does the city council have the prerogative to, to adjust the award on a light item basis? And are you concerned about that or fine with that?
Morgan Pavement Maintenance, they know that they can file a formal protest within 10 days of the, of the notice of award. They've told us that they're not planning to do that. They still can. So we would just recommend that we not give notice to proceed to Intermountain Slurry Seal until, until those 10 days are up. And again, in a unit price contract, we can eliminate items, but we, we chose not to do that on the recommendation, as previously stated, that we didn't, we didn't want to make it-
Can we still do that? I mean, after it's awarded, do you, can they say too bad or?
We could do that tonight. If you, if you wanted to say, "We don't want to award item number three either and adjust the recommended amount down," that, that would be within the contract document limits. I mean, that's within what we have the ability to do in, within the contract documents.
But if we don't take the crosswalk out, can you take it out later?
Oh, yes, yes.
That is, we, we're not committed to that, is my question.
No.
And just, I know the mayor was asking specifically on the unit price and light items, but also in our procurement policy under evaluating bids, one of the criteria that we look at is quality and another is reputation, and under the reputation clause, it says that we can look at the quality of previous goods, services, or work obtained from the bidder. So that's what we're relying on at this, for this recommendation as, as stated by the city engineer.
I have a question about the crosswalks, Kevin. Is there any way to make them less slick? We've, I know that I've heard a lot of, of comments, not just from Robin, that when they're wet, they're really, really dangerous. Is there anything that can be added to that? Is that maybe why their, their pricing for the crosswalk is so high? That they're adding something to, to that striping material?
No, that's just a pretty standard paint. The UDOT specification is a higher specification that they use on state roads that's a more of a mastic. The paint, Randy might be able to answer that question a little bit more, how heavily they paint it, whether or not it gets, it gets slick. Have you noticed whether or not the states are maybe slicker than the cities in the, in the state roads where they use the thicker?
I don't think so, but Randy did say that he thought there was like a gritty, some clear, something that could be sprayed over them that might make them not so slick. If it prevented one accident, it would be worth it.
Yeah, that'll be something that we'll, we'll need to talk to Public Works about, to see what materials they might, like I say, the state uses a thermoplastic for all of their striping and, and that may be less slick. It might be more slick, I'm not sure.
Thank you.
All right, do we, I would look for a motion then to award the, the bid for Streets Crack Seal and Surry, Slurry Seal to Intermountain Slurry Seal for the amount of $217, $335.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Kevin. Next up on the agenda is a public hearing for a zone map amendment, which is a rezone of the property of 77 West Lund Lane from agricultural low to residential- of the property of seventy-seven West Lund Lane from agricultural low to residential low. This is a, a recommendation that has been passed on from the Planning Commission, and we'll have staff report, first from our city planner, Corey. I need to disclose that, that I, I know both the applicant and the adjoining property owner is my brother and sister-in-law. I feel I can conduct the meeting in an objective way, but if anyone has concerns about a, a conflict, I'm happy to recuse myself and sit in the, sit in the audience. My understanding of, of state law is, as explained to me by Lisa, is I don't necessarily, we need to state our, our conflicts, but it's optional on whether I completely recuse from the discussion or not.
Yeah, so the section that we've discussed of the Municipal Officers' Employees Ethics Act prohibits any officer from using or attempting to use his or her official position to gain special privileges for himself or others. So, that's just the question here, since a family member owns the property right next door. But again, much of the act is set up to just require disclosure, not an outright recusal. So, it's, it's up to the, the member to make that determination.
So, if anyone has concerns, I'm happy to recuse myself.
I don't think you need to recuse yourself as an unvoting member on this.
That's kind of what I think.
It's academic.
If we ask you for your vote, then we're going to recuse you.
All right, we'll proceed with the staff report, please, Corey.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, just by procedures, so you understand, the request before you is right now a amendment to the zoning map. It is true that there was an application for conceptual subdivisions submitted with it. The applicant desired to at least show the city what they intended, and also to allow the Planning Commission to move forward on a conceptual basis if there was a recommendation pending any approval on the rezone later. And so, the Planning Commission has reviewed not only the rezone, they've also reviewed the conceptual, but that review is held up in further force until, or acceptance until you make action on the rezone. Why is that important, simply from the fact of is, is that generally you'll see applicants want to show what they intend with a piece of property, rather than just come in blindly with a request for rezone. But understand that there's not an obligation to complete that. Once you rezone, whatever is available under that rezone is potentially possible. At this point, the Planning Commission is waiting to hear, you'll likely see a subdivision if this moves forward, and the intent right now is according to what their conceptual plan shows. If they reverse that, they would have to go back to the Planning Commission and reverse that discussion with them, and then have the Planning Commission weigh in then. So, procedurally, you're just looking at the rezone in spite of knowing that they intend to subdivide the property with the current configuration you've seen in, in the materials. As far as rezoning, this is a legislative action, as you know, so there is the issue of reasonably debatable action. Ian Centerville's ordinance is when we consider what's reasonably debatable. We have some criteria within the ordinance to look at. One of our criteria is compliance with the city's master plan. You also look at, is there any problems internally to the property? Is there any problems externally that might be affected from the property in question? You also look at available utilities and services to the property. Generally, from staff's review and Planning Commission, it meets the criteria of the zoning ordinance for a rezone. Probably recap, the, the, the argument of policy debate is our general plan. Our general plan indicates that there are agriculturally zoned properties in this neighborhood, and that the city would not automatically rezone those agricultural properties. They would allow the agricultural low zoning to continue until such time somebody wanted to change it. So, when you did your citywide rezoning back in two thousand and three, you did not take the RL, which is eligible in the future for this neighborhood, and just automatically lay it over the top of the entire community. You let the community, that which was developed as quarter acre lots, and, and, and close to, was created in the RL zone, two thousand and three, that which was in the agricultural area, you left agriculture. That was consistent with the city's general plan in two thousand and three. So, now the request is, is on a case-by-case basis, as the properties are ready to be further developed, they can request for an RL zoning. According to the city's overall residential plan, this area, well, the community plan says it should be low density. The overall general plan says that AL and RL are categorized as low density. And so, whether it's half acre or quarter acre lots, according to the city's general plan, both of those zones are low density, and that's the future of this neighborhood, is to maintain low density. And so, the commission found it consistent with the parameters of the neighborhood plan. Utilities are present and available to be constructed. There's some off-site improvements that need to take place regardless of what zone it is, whether it's agricultural or residential low. They have to put some infrastructure in to complete the drainage and so forth, and complete the water lines. But they're all stubbed to the area and available. So, the commission made a recommendation to allow the property to be rezoned to residential low.
Any questions for Mr. Snyder?
So, I'm looking at the zoning map. What is the crosshatching across a number of sections? It's on kind of a forty-five degree angle. Is that supposed to?
There's two sets of crosshacks up in that area. The first one is the PDO, so if you go down to the Woods Park at Lund Lane and the frontage road, that's a PDO, Plan Development Overlay Cross Hatch. And if you go up on the hillside, you'll see the hillside crosshatch, which I think is just a general forty-five.
Meaning that it's part of the hillside overlay district in any, anything that applies to hillside.
Yeah, so there's some additional development regulations when you're up on the hillside.
So, in part of it, it comes all the way down to Main, right?
Part of the hillside comes down, in some areas, down to Main Street on the northeast neighborhood area.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for staff? Any, before we open the, the public hearing, any, any comments from the applicant, or presentation from the applicant?
Thank you, Mayor. I am Phil Holland with Wright Development Group, and we are a local business here in Centerville as of about a year and a half. And we chose to come to Centerville, like a lot of people, because Centerville's a great city. Great area, great location. When somebody comes here and buys a home, they want to keep their values high. And we feel it, anytime we develop a property, we feel it a responsibility that we have to make sure that we do a great project. And we've been collectively in our company, been doing it for over forty years. When we looked at this site, and I just want to maybe make mention of two things. The first one, Corey did a great job explaining that the property and the zone amendment is consistent with the general plan. That's the first thing we always look at. When we look to buy a property or develop a property, are we doing something that is in the city's general plan? Do we have to change that? Are we overburdening the city with, you know, are we going to have a lot of public outcry? These are all things that are very important to us. And when we researched that general plan, we thought this is going to be a great community for this site. The second thing that was important to us is, we don't want to ask for a rezone without showing at least the Planning Commission what we want to do. And I think most of you have seen that plan, and, and as Corey stated, we're not talking about that right now. But it is important to us to, are you, do you have it? Our average lot size that we are going to propose is point four-two, which is greatly larger than most RL zones within the area. And as a lot of you know, most of Centerville City consists of an RL zone. If you live in Centerville, you most likely live in an RL zone. And that can take you down to a quarter lot. But like I said, our average lot that we are proposing is point four-two, and that's important for us. We see that that's where the market is, and we see that that's a good-sized lot. We're not seeking a density. And in today's economy, and you've seen it, especially in Centerville over the years, that when somebody approaches a land opportunity, they either have to go high density, or they have to charge a lot for the lots. That's a developer's two options. And, and I'm well aware of, of the history in Centerville recently in regards to that, where a developer is seeking density. We wanted to make sure we did really the opposite of that. Give a project, propose it, and make them lots that are big. So, those are the only things I have. I'm, I'm definitely open for any questions or comments that you might have.
I might have some after the public hearing portion.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Holland before we open the public hearing? Thank you. We'll go ahead and, and open the public hearing and invite any members of the public who would like to come and speak and provide their opinion to the council. After the public hearing, we'll give the applicant a chance to respond and also allow time for, for questions for, for, for staff and for the applicant. So, the public hearing is, is now open. We invite you to come and, and state your name for the record before you provide your comments.
Hello, my name is Chris Cutler, and I live in North Centerville. And Paul has mentioned, we own the property that's just to the south of the, the property that's there requesting a rezone. Simply stated, we feel that the north part of Centerville, which is currently zoned as, as agricultural, is an important part of the community. Those of us that live on that end of town appreciate a little bit bigger lots, and we simply would like to maintain that as the, the last little part of the heritage of, of Centerville, and perhaps we're being a little bit naive in, in, in our assumptions, but we, we feel that it would be a nice thing to have the agricultural status of low density remain in place. Thank you. And Paul doesn't get any special considerations.
My name is Ron Dean. I've been a Centerville resident for forty years. I think having larger lots, great, but why can't we just leave them half acre? It's zoned for half acre, I don't know why we need to do that. I think they could probably increase the, the cost of the lots to be able to keep those at half acre lots. I would propose that we keep it the way it's zoned right now as half acre lots.
Hello, my name's Lisa Robinson, and I did send you all a letterlet yesterday, not thinking that I'd be able to come tonight, but I was able to come, and I wanted to know, the main reason I came was, I was, there is, there's a couple acres right behind my home, and there's about forty-five homes that are on half acres down through that area. And when my husband came to a meeting a couple of years ago and found out that the master plan for the city was for it to become RL rather than AL, we were very surprised, thinking even if it did get developed behind us, there'd only be a few homes, which now becomes many more homes. And then, when that subdivision came in on the corner of Frontage and Lund Lane in that area, I became very concerned and quickly realized that the city plan and the city Planning Commission were completely different to my feelings about what would happen in that area of Centerville. So, I know you know how I feel about it, and I too would like to ask that the city plan be looked at, and the master plan be looked at in a way that would allow for the integrity of that neighborhood and the way it is to be maintained and enjoyed by those who have purchased property in that area. So, thank you for your consideration.
Hi, I'm Matthew Cutler. I live in North Centerville. The motto of Centerville City is that friendly, it's a friendly city by Great Salt Lake, and we, we look at the word friendly, and according to dictionary.com, the word friendly means to coexist without harm. But what are we coexisting with? And the city, according to your website, states that we are coexisting with each individual's culture, and we're coexisting without harm. On a global level, homogenization of culture is a bad thing. We destroy religion, we destroy language, dialect, and so, even on a city level, homogenization of culture is bad. If you look, there are different sections of Centerville which are different cultures, basically. And so, we see that you, by rezoning this, we are destroying the cultural integrity of Northern Centerville, of having half acre lots in this AL zoning. Specifically, the area around Lund Lane, people that grew up in this area say that they do not want this to be, become RL, they want it to keep it AL, with one student from Vumont High School today stating that why would they build houses there? This is the beauty of, this is the beauty of Northern Centerville, talking about how we have these larger, larger lots. And according to Gillian Hector, a reporter that focuses on civil rights abuses, in nineteen ninety-four, without culture, you have nothing, there is no reason to live. So, basically, by turning this from a AL zone to an RL zone, we're getting rid, rid of this culture, and thus decreasing the quality of life of those constituents in Northern Centerville. Furthermore, in December of two thousand and fifteen, this City Council voted, and in January of two thousand and sixteen, the City Council ratified the Dual Creek Historic District creation, otherwise known as Ordinance two thousand and fifteen thirty. Basically, this is respecting the culture of the Dual Creek Historic District. So, I respectfully ask that you respect the culture of Northern Centerville, specifically with having an AL zoning, AL zoning, and not disregarding our culture. Furthermore, the German philosopher Nietzsche stated that suffering is good, and that we should embrace suffering because it helps us attain self-actualization. He also said that the, the one thing that's worse than suffering is pointless suffering, and that's, that's the biggest harm that we can have in society today. According to me, what I feel, I feel that there should be no homes on this. This would create pointless suffering for the Wright Development Group that bought this land. But if they want to rezone this and create smaller lots, that's creating more homes, which creates pointless suffering on my hand. So, I propose that we have a compromise, and this nation was built on compromise, that we just stay with the AL zoning that we have currently. In this way, we provide meaning suffering for both the constituents of the era, area, and the Wright Development Group. Furthermore, when the Wright Development Group stood up to talk, he says that the public outcry is important for the Wright Development Group, and if the public outcry is truly important, he would understand this compromise and keep it at an AL level. Thank you.
I dare anyone to follow that.
My name's Heather Healy, and I promise I will keep my comments very short and not quite that eloquent. My parents actually own the property just southwest. It's actually the property that sits directly south of the Woods Park subdivision. And, um, they couldn't be here today, so they asked me if I would kind of come. We would really like to see this property be maintained as AL. Like so many have said, most of the property surrounding the property that is looking to be rezoned is AL. And why are we in such a hurry to change it from AL to RL? It's point oh eight of an acre that they are going to have to increase the lot size to in order to make it what the AL is supposed to be. So, I, as someone who came with her parents and saw the process that went into the Woods Park subdivision, this is exactly how the Woods Park subdivision started. It started with the rezone from AL to RL, and now they have twenty-nine homes sitting directly north of them. And now they have 29 homes sitting directly north of them. So we would really like to see this be maintained as AL and maintain the integrity of the property that surrounds the Northern Centerville area.
Uh, my name is Mike Olman. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members for this opportunity. I live on 1950 North. Uh, the impetus for, uh, me buying my lot there was that it was a half acre lot. And I think the AL zoning gives you some options that you don't have with the RL. And I think one of them is it's, there's a lot, you're allowed one large animal. And that brings a certain kind of, uh, personality to the area, but most of us that live over there, we, we live there for that reason, for those half acre size lots. And I would petition the developer that if he could do that, it would be easily approved. Otherwise, I think there, there's a lot of opposition to that. And, and I oppose that anything smaller than a half acre lot. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm John Higley. I am a Centerville resident and I own the property just west of this proposed development. The difference between a .42 lot and a half acre lot is roughly 12 feet per lot, per the depth of the lot. So I don't see it as really a question of whether the lots are going to be large enough or advantageous to people who want a larger lot. I see it as a lifestyle choice. And that lifestyle is simply, do you want to own an agricultural light property where you can have one at large animal, as Mr. Olman has stated, or if you don't want that? I don't think that it's, makes sense to argue about the lot size. I think it's a lifestyle choice. And I think that's what the, the city council needs to consider, is what kind of lifestyle we want or that we are going to, to demand on this property. Uh, I respect everyone's opinions, uh, on this. I'm in favor of allowing this project as it's shown. My understanding is that if there is another proposed project that will go in this area, that it would again have to meet and go through the planning commission and again, city council. So I think that we need to talk about this particular piece of property and what is being proposed to be done on it. And then consider what we want to do as far as lifestyle. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Robert Hawks and, uh, for the record, I'd like to see this go through since it's my property that, uh, we're selling. And, um, I just wanted to tell you a little bit of background. We moved into the community about 25 years ago and found this piece of property. And when we started with it, the city wanted us to put curb and gutter and sidewalk and put a new Lund Lane in all the way down. And it was everything that I could do to fight not to have to do that. And I said, I would like to do that when there's homes there, but I don't want to put a curb and gutter and sidewalk and storm drain and everything down there. And so through the process of the, everything, they came in agreements that, uh, when it, when it got developed, that we would have to do all that. And since then, um, I've taken all the stumps out that it used to be a grove and finished it up nice and got an engineering firm to plant all those trees in accordance to future lot sizes. And in fact, when I chose the Wright Development Group, I had other higher bids from other high-density people. And I thought, no, I'm not going to do that to Centerville and I'm not going to do that to my neighbors. But for those that are concerned with the cultural collapse of North Centerville, um, it's already happened. There's very, there's much, much higher density housing in, uh, Farmington across the street on the other side and to the west and to the east. And I thought I was doing the, the, uh, neighborhood a big favor by making a, a choice to have near half acre lots. The land wouldn't, I'm not a bit concerned about them baiting and switching and going to a smaller lot size because they, they just logistically wouldn't work out putting that many homes in there and be able to maintain with the rules. And, and this has followed the process that is outlined and it does meet all the criteria for the city that is outlined and I, uh, would greatly appreciate it going through. Thank you.
My name is Mila Cutler. I'm Chris's wife. I didn't want to come to this meeting because I have felt that in previous public meetings, hearings, that the petitions that have been presented before the planning commission and the city council have been ignored by the government. And the public's concerns have been ignored. I feel that you're not seriously looking for our input, but you're just doing what you're supposed to be doing. You're doing it because it's part of the process. You have to have a public hearing. With that stated, I want to tell you what my concerns are. I did not like, and I, and I expressed my opinion about the Pan subdivision going in on that northwest corner of Lund Lane. I expressed safety concerns, I talked about the water table, and I feel like that was ignored. Now, Mr. Snyder will say that the developer put in this great big drainage system. That's fine. I don't see it benefiting anybody but that subdivision. The riots that own the property just southeast of them, their basement is still wet. And here we are in April because it floods, because it doesn't tap into the drainage that was put in for that subdivision. So as benefiting all of Centerville, I don't see that happening. Sorry, Mr. Snyder. I like what Matthew said about cultural diversity, um, about the only diversity you get in Centerville, okay? When my in-laws bought that property in 1975, it was with the purpose of teaching their family and children how to work. If you go back to the map that you put up of Centerville and show all of the RL, there is no place really for a child to learn how to work anymore. And I want my children to have the same opportunities that my gr- children, my grandchildren, excuse me, that my children had of working, of working on the land, of working with animals if it's their choice. And if you do that, RL, I respect Mr. Phil, sorry, and I respect that you say you want to do that. But that's going to bring more people to the area that we have grown accustomed to letting our children and grandchildren just have free rein pretty much. They can go out there and I don't have to worry about somebody running them over, although we do get a lot coming down our street that just speed thinking it's a through street and they're very disappointed when they have to turn around. I was noticing on your agenda that you're talking about wild animals. Well, I have my own wild animal refuge there. I get at least 18 deer out there. And my grandchildren love to go out there and look at the deer. I have a little two-year-old that gets really excited and she walks out there barefoot. I would like to leave the property the way it is. And if you are, I respect Bob's right to develop his property. But really, a quarter, a half of an acre, I don't think that's much to ask. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak during the public hearing?
I just have a question.
Yep.
So I'm removed, I'm Mark Gabriel. I'm removed from this whole situation. I don't live very close. I live 1900 North in a developed area where our kids run free rein and have a great time and work and do everything as well. But I guess my question is, if we're talking about a cultural change, why can't you rezon to allow one large animal on a lot that's only 12 feet difference in width? I mean, if that's an issue, why not rezon it so that these lots can have, whether they want them or not, are, can, are allowed to have one large animal? Putting it out there.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it, uh, give the applicant a chance to respond if, if he desires to any of those questions that were made, or staff a chance to, uh, respond to questions.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, maybe just, I appreciate the comments. I think the number thing, number one thing I'd say again, uh, and Cory said it earlier, and the, the great thing about this process, and especially my job is to work with cities on a daily basis. And I have to research what that city's plan is on that property. What we are proposing, the zone, is consistent with what the city has set out to be. And Centerville City has certain criteria where does this zone meet the criteria and should we allow this to happen? Cory said it earlier. We meet all the criteria. Now, everybody in the world wants a bigger lot in their backyard. Everybody. And if somebody lives by, and I hear this every day and it was stated a, a couple of times today, let's just keep it open. Great thing about being in America is that we do have property rights. And in America, we also have guiding principles, general plans, zoning, and we've met those. And so my request is that we, we change this consistent with the general plan that the city has set out for. And I open it up to any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Holland or for staff? Uh, we've had the public hearing, but I'll reopen the public hearing if you want to come and state your name and ask, ask a question.
I guess one question I have is with the developer. Sorry, Josh Christensen. I've lived in Centerville for only four years. But when I moved here, I specifically moved here because I bought a half acre lot. And it seems like as soon as I moved in, I started having to attend meetings like this because they're changing it. But anyways, I guess one question I have is the developer is developing the property. Obviously, when we change the zoning, there's no going back. If the economy tanks and building the larger houses doesn't work, they need to, you know, go to quarter acre lots hypothetically, there's nothing we can do. I understand that. I guess my question for the builder, or the developers, are you building this or is a builder going to come in and build on this property? Are you just the developer or will you actually be building the homes?
So we are selling, this is simple. We are developing these lots and we are selling custom build lots to custom builders or individuals that want to build their own home.
You, you won't be building your, you won't be building yourselves?
Right. And that's important too. Uh, there's a lot of, for lack of a better term, there's a lot of production builders in this area, in the marketplace. We've noticed that there's a, an increasing demand in lots that somebody wants to go buy. The market doesn't ask for half acres anymore. The market doesn't seek animal rights anymore and it hasn't for a long time. And so we are hitting the market where we think that it's a good place to be. Back to a couple of, and, and Mr. Hawk said this perfectly, I'm constrained by what I can do on this property because it has a lot of frontage and it has a lot of depth. But there's no way I could get, say, 20 lots on here. It just won't work. Physically, I cannot do that. And so the best plan that we've, uh, provided and said, you know, let's keep these large, these are custom lots. Our estimate is, is that these are going to be the homes, 550 to 700, $800,000 homes, which is what we're hitting in other markets throughout Davis County. I hope that answered his question.
Thank you. Any questions from council or discussion?
Uh, not for the developer, but Blaine, would you please bring up Title 12, um, from the municipal code, page nine? I'll stall while you're doing that since Mr. Cutler mentioned Nietzsche. I will mention one of my favorite quotes when dealing with Nietzsche in government is there are no facts, only interpretations. And, um...
Excuse me.
Municipal Code, Title 12, page nine.
So it's actually the zoning code?
The zoning code itself.
May I interrupt you?
Sure.
Blaine, not to keep you busy, but I just got a text that our streaming is down.
Okay. It is, I'm, I'm sorry, do I need to go to the zoning code to try to bring that up or is it in the back?
Yeah, zoning code.
I'm not sure how quick I can access that.
Okay. I've got it up, but I can't.
I think we need to put it up on the screen because this is going to be important. So I'll continue to stall.
You've got to help me when you find out, Lisa.
So the other quote, if you're talking about Germans who've said great things about law, the other one would be Otto von Bismarck. So there are two things you'd never want to see being made, law and sausage. So the, the process that we're involved in here tonight is, is, uh, interpretation subject to laws that are on the books. And as it has been mentioned, um, by the developer and by a staff member, their request is consistent with the general plan. However, when you look at Title 12, which we'll bring up, page nine, there actually is multiple criteria used in a zoning determination. The general plan is only one of those determining factors. When we have that up, I'll call that out. So at the, at the risk of droning on, I'm just going to read you a little bit of that section because that's, I can't read that. I don't know if anyone else can read that. Criteria number one, or the following, it says in the amendment, the following factor should be considered. One, whether the property text or map amendment is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the general plan. Number two, whether the proposed map amendment is harmonious with the overall character of existing development in the vicinity of the subject property. Number three, the extent to which the proposed map amendment may adversely affect adjacent properties. And, number four, for proposed map amendments, the adequacy of facilities and services intended to serve the, uh, the subject property, including but not limited to roadways, parks, recreation facilities, police and fire protection, schools, stormwater drainage systems, water supplies and wastewater, refuse collection. So in all deference to, to our, um, staff member who provided the report and to the developer, I do not disagree that this is probably consistent with that first criteria. I do not believe, however, that it is consistent with criteria two and three based on what is already in existence at the, at the area for myself. I'm using a spot of green up there. And, uh, I have heard plenty of comments, uh, from property owners who believe that it will adversely affect their property that is adjacent to. So that criteria to me is, is of concern that we, we consider all four pieces of criteria, not just number one.
Comment or if you'd like to respond?
Sorry about that. I just, um, because it's a good point. If we bring the zoning map back up, uh, and we don't have to, we've all looked at the zone plenty of times, but you can see the area... plenty of times, but you can see the area that's green, and this is really the only, as the Wasatch Front gets more populated, this is what happens in every city. People try to locate in different areas. Over the last, I would say decade, Cory would know this better than me, but most AL zones, people in my situation that are trying to get the AL, that go to the RL, they get it. If you notice what the project did to the east, so they were given that RL. Project to the west, also given RL. One of the issues that I think that you brought up is that I'm kind of an, or the Hawks' property is an outlier on Lund Lane a little bit. Because it has Main Street there, but every.